We have a presentation this evening on future ready goal number four elimination of disparities and student access and success. So, welcome. Thank you for being here this evening and we're looking forward to hearing your message.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin Board, Dr. Lori Dent. Definitely grateful being here and even though I'm nervous, I'm actually also excited to kind of share the work that we've been working on throughout the year. And so as we move forward, before we move forward, what I'd like to say is take us back to our promise. And our promise in summer by like school district, right, is to know and value and support every single student. And so when we think about goal four, in elimination of disparities, that's, that's what we want to do. So, goal four is pointing in terms of that there are two specific sub-goals in goal four. And the first one is by 2026, there is a discipline data will show no disproportionality, so zero percent in disproportionality, suspensions and expulsion rates across all student groups. The second sub-goal that we see right here is by 2026, there will be a 10% increase in the enrollment of students taking advanced coursework and specialized programs in all student groups. But before we move forward, what I want to add is that goal four this year was treated like an exploratory stage. So in a stage of like learning baseline year, a baseline year for various reasons. And one of the reasons why is because like in 1920, obviously, we had shut down schools because of the coronavirus. And then 2021, we went into a hybrid model. And then 2122, so last school year, right, was our first year in person. And it was about like reteaching, relearning, ensuring our students' social emotional needs are being met. And so this year, as we look at 22, 23, and as students have already been in school for a year, we're looking at the data for this school year as more of our baseline. Now, as stated in our strategic plan, equity is the red thread that connects all the goals together. And so in terms of goal four, equity is about meeting the needs of all students so that they have access to resources to meet their academic goals and behavioral expectations, which is in alignment with goal, goal four.
Right. So we have multiple relationships to the school board policy. And of course, on the left, you can see the discipline goals related to rights responsibilities, student discipline is man. On the right, we've got our academic goals in terms of school improvement plans, academic acceleration, course design, selection and adoption materials and program evaluation. So multiple policies that that we touch on. And when we talk about project cost budget allocation, this is a tricky one. We're not able to identify specifically how much money it goes toward the school because when you look at how far reaching this is into all that we do. So if you look at discipline, we're talking restorative practices, we're talking equity building leads, we're talking about deans of students, we're talking about supervision pairs and CSOs just for a few examples. So when you talk about discipline and all the supports that we have in place, all the MTSS that Genie has has talked about over the years, there's so much that supports this goal that it's hard to capture in terms of a budget allocation. And then, of course, on the right, academic coursework goal, we have school counselors, advanced coursework, elementary intervention teachers, curriculum adoptions, just to name a few of how far reaching this particular goal is.
So, in terms of today and today's presentation, there are outcomes, there are some outcomes, three outcomes that relate to school. The first one is this presentation will follow the work that we do in our PLCs. As you know, there are four questions that we explore. What do we need to know and be able to do? Where are we now and how do we know? How will we get there and how will respond if we don't get there? So these are the four guiding questions that and staff members and builders use in their PLCs on Mondays. And that's how we are going to walk through this presentation with you all for both goals. The second thing is really identifying how the four pillars in the strategic plan are woven through the work we are doing across all schools. And then lastly, the outcomes is really understanding the discipline language systems, research baseline data and the disproportionality is when responding to behavioral violations. The second part of that is understand the academic acceleration policy, as we said before, the language and current progress to ensure all students are college and career ready. Now, when we look at, just a reminder of our four pillars, our four pillars do support goal four. An example you will see is access to rigorous coursework under pillar one, which really connects to the academic acceleration program. And then you also see behavioral expectations in pillar two, restored practices in pillar three, and data supported MTSS in pillar four. We are already, we are already doing the work and I just want to highlight this, these strategies in the presentation. This is something that we should really actually celebrate because even though this year is that exploratory stage for goal four, we're still doing the work. And this is to ensure that we keep our promise to our students. So, we'll go ahead and move on to that first PLC question, but we'll focus on the discipline data. So what do we need to know and be able to do? So by 2026, discipline data will show no disproportionality in suspension and expulsion rates across all student groups. Now, oh, sorry, that's you.
That's okay. It's all good. So before we head further into the presentation, we just want to make sure that we've got a common definition that we really understand what the term disproportionality means. And so when you look at how we're using this term, it's the unequal or out of proportion or overrepresentation of a particular student group compared to the representation in the general student population. And so, for example, if our Hispanic population makes up 10% of of our students in the district, but we have 20% of discipline situations occurring by those 10%, that's disproportionate. We have an unequal or out of proportion amount of behaviors that come out of a particular group. So there's an example. As well, when we talk about suspensions and expulsions. And so in this area, this is where the school denies student attendance in response to a behavioral violation. And so suspension expulsions in our district, they include in-school suspensions, short-term suspensions, long-term suspensions, expulsions and emergency expulsions, just to review those discipline exclusionary steps that we can take.
And then what it does not have, right? It doesn't have, you know, AM detention, lunch detention, or PM detention.
And just a reminder, I know a while back, the board approved our updated student discipline policy and procedure. And in our 3241 procedure, we have a discipline matrix that shows all the different behaviors that that we might respond to. Thirty-nine of those behaviors, behavioral violations may lead to suspension or expulsion. And so some examples that we have here, assault, fighting, harassment, drug distribution, and so forth. So just those are some examples of why we make school students. But, getting to our next, what we'd like to do for a moment is we want to reflect on your own experiences in school. So think back to when you were in elementary, middle school or junior high or high school. And so what did discipline look like back then? Whether you were maybe the recipient or the observer of school discipline. And so what did school discipline look like? What do you remember?
Went into the principal's office.
Going to the principal's office. Had to stand on the wall, so some sort of physical.
Threatened with the ruler.
Threatened with a ruler, yes. Isn't that interesting that that many of us still have memories of that? Yeah.
I never.
Or SWAT. Yeah, yeah, right. Anything else? Lunch detentions.
Saturday work.
Saturday schools or Saturday work? Yep. Yeah.
Only once.
Yeah. Changed your ways, right? Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And one of the things that we want to make sure is really explicit is in the state of Washington in 2019, school discipline law changed. And so we used to work under a zero tolerance where we would not tolerate certain behaviors. And so basically, you behave a certain way, you're out for a certain number of days, or maybe for a long-term suspension and so forth. And really, state law has changed that we no longer use that belief system or that system of zero tolerance. Instead, there really has been a transition and Josh is going to go further into it. I don't want to steal your thunder. But but if we look at, what is the reason for discipline? It's to change the behavior. And so how do we really do that? Kicking kids out of school is not necessarily the way to change behavior. And sometimes we do need to do some sort of discipline that includes exclusion. But really, instead, what are we doing to educate children and and help them change their behavior? So, Josh.
With that, let's, I want to take us a little bit deeper into this term. We'll talk about discipline because when we talk about discipline, I heard, you know, like the standing on the wall, ruler, principal's office, lunch attention, Saturday work, right? That is our understanding and our, what we grew up with. And that's what I grew up with, right? But what is the actual root meaning of discipline? So, discipline actually comes from the root word, Latin root word disciplina, which means instruction, which also is rooted in this year, which means to learn. So in reality, discipline is rooted in the concept of to teach. So when we think about discipline and we think about what, what we saw as discipline back then, and then what Sarah had talked about in terms of like switching that mindset in terms of that zero tolerance to, are we actually changing behavior? What are we teaching and what are we educating students? So then the question then becomes, is the root word of discipline reflected of our practice today and in alignment, obviously, with state law? So, to answer that question, right, let's see what research says. So, we take you on a journey to look at national research and also a little bit of history lesson. So when we talk about, so when I want to, when I, when I talk about the history of discipline, what I want to say is that I would summarize it as intent versus impact. So, since the early 1970s, schools across the nation have implemented and increased usage of school suspension with the intent of hoping that, of ensuring that they have a safe learning environment. That's the intent, right, behind that zero tolerance policy. The impact, however, was quite different. After three decades of research by the US Education Department, Department's Office of Civil Rights, it actually had detrimental effect to student learning and in fact, did not keep schools safer. So, what specifically does research say? And this is still part of that exploratory stage in terms of what do we need to know, right? So what does research say? Students suspended at early grade levels are far more likely to be suspended in later grades. By removing students from supervised settings puts students at greater risk for dropping out, gang involvement and driven out of delinquency. There's no evidence that frequent reliance on removing behaving students improves school safety or school behavior. Furthermore, there has been consistent findings that African-American and Latino youth are overrepresented in school suspensions. National data and researchers also saw that increased use of suspensions has been largest for poor and minority children. And this last bullet is quite interesting to me. Higher rates of school suspension and expulsion have poorer outcomes on standardized achievement tests regardless of the economic level or demographic of their students. And so, in, so the, this is what research has shown in terms of what they found from early 1970s today. Now, taking that national research that we found, the question then becomes, can we quick one more? Does our discipline data actually reflect what the research has said? Because every, every place is different. So we need to know, do we reflect that? So we'll go, so I want to prepare you all. We are, oh, sorry. Yeah, there we go. Yeah, thank you. So where, we're going into the next question, PLC question, where are we now? And how do we know in terms of discipline? So we talked about disproportionality and I'm going to be showing you a series of, of data points. But the question then becomes, what does disproportionality look like? Because there's multiple ways in looking at disproportionality. But the way that we captured the data, this is how we can look at disproportionality. So first and foremost, you need to know that when you look at the data, there are a number of students who have been suspended, expelled in each group. So you'll see a number and that number is representative of how many students have been suspended or expelled from each group. Now, when we talk about no disproportionality, what we mean is that each group would actually have the same percentage of suspension. And I'm going to walk you through what that might look like. So with the first one, where are we now and how do we do? And we're using 2122 data to kind of go through this, okay? So this is not our baseline, but this is the data that we looked at from last year. So we're looking at the discipline rates for gender. We have female and male. And so when you look at the female and male, 2122, you see that where it says N, that's the count, the N count, right? So there's 270 males altogether who receive, who's received a suspension. That is 5% of the male student population. Now, if you look at the female, you see that there's 87 female students, which consists of 1.7% of that population. Now, there is disproportionality because you can tell that male students are at a higher rate, are being suspended at a higher rate than female students. Now, if there was no disproportionality, then that means, let's say, the female rate would be at a 5%, you know, would have the same percentage. Now, we hope they don't have 5%. And we hope that number is 0%. But you know, reality is that our goal is to ensure that we keep those percentage points lower. Another way of looking at it is through race and ethnicity.
This is K-12, right?
K through 12, yes. 2122 data, K through 12. Then we also look at data through various groups. So the next one, for example, is by race and ethnicity. And as you can tell on there, you only see Hispanic, Latino, two or more race or multiracial, and we have white. What you see there that are, that's blocked off, the end value is, is small, that a percentage could, you know, screw, not screw, could tip the percentage points. But what I also want you to know is that because the end value is so small, we are, we would be able to identify who the student is, which, you know, violates some laws. But when we look at that, we see Hispanic, Latino are, there's some disproportionality there with 4.8% in 2122. And then we move on forward to programs, for example, in 2122 data. And we look at our EL, low income, high cap, almost student population, five students with Bible four and students with IEDs. And if you take a look at the data and look at the low income, I want to take you back. If you look back at the the national research and we talked about who is the most impacted and said poor students and low income students, well, right here is reflective of that national research. And then if we look back at the other national research one talks about black and African-American males and Hispanic youth are overrepresented. We also saw that in the 2122 data report. But these are some of the ways in which we look at data, disaggregate data by student groups at different levels, by programs, ethnicities and gender. We also tried to segregate data in terms of by grade level as well. And so as you can tell, if you look at the seven, eight, nine, 10 grade levels in 21 and 22 school year, you see that those have a higher percentage of students being suspended or expelled. Now, the question is, where are we today? What, what does our baseline data look like today? Now, this is where we're at today. So suspensions and expulsion data, and we took the data from September 22 to February of 2023, so last, last month. And this was through the data mining via Skyward. Now, their total, their total number of incidents, 494 incidents of students who have been suspended or expelled thus far from September to February. Now, of that 494, 70 of those suspension expulsions come from the elementary level. 424 of those come from the secondary level. Now, the total number of students that were actually suspended or expelled is 305. So, for example, of the 494 incidents, 305 of those students make up those incidents. Now, if you break that down by grade level, 41 of those are from elementary students and for the secondary level, 264 students. Now, like I said, we talked about trying to pull data from multiple levels. So we have our race, ethnicity, gender, programs and grade levels are still to be determined. But what I want you to know is that the goal is to ensure that we are pulling the data for every school building so that building leaders are informed of what the disproportionality may look like or, or what the data set even says. Going in a little bit deeper, where are we today? So what are the types of actions? So of the 494, right? What actions do we see? Well, 257 of, 257 of them were short-term suspensions, so less than 10 days. In-school suspensions, there's 204. Emerging expulsions, there are 32. Long-term suspensions, there are zero. Now, we know of one now. And so, but expulsions, one. Now, I know that any type of suspensions or expulsions is nothing to celebrate. But one thing I do want to celebrate really or actually recognize is the in-school suspension piece. Our building leaders and staff members really try hard to support our students. And when we are having them, you know, away from their classroom, it's a lot harder for us, right? Our sphere of control, it's a lot harder for us to support them in that manner. Now, when schools are given the option to provide in-school suspensions, students have access to their teachers, students have access to counselors, mentors. And the fact that we see 204 in-school suspensions instead of 200 plus more short-term suspensions is a big win for us and really shows that our building leaders are doing the best that they can to support our students, especially students when they have major behavioral violations. So that's one of the things that we wanted to point out. Now, what are the top four behavioral violations and number of students in those violations? So fighting without major injury, that's the number one thing, right? There are 97 total incidents of fighting, dangerous behavior. There's 69 incidents, marijuana, 69, and then disruptive conduct, there were 48. Now, the reason why I put this up there is because some of the questions that come about as we're in this exploratory stage is like, what actually constitutes dangerous behavior? My version of dangerous behavior may be different from my colleague as dangerous behavior. Our building's term of dangerous behavior or disruptive conduct may be different from another building's thing. So those are the types of questions that we are, are, are coming up with as we are just looking at the data, data points. Now, like that path, the question, we move to the third question. How will we get there? Now, our main goal is to show no disproportionality in suspensions and expulsion rates across all student groups. We explored what we need to know, where we were at, and now we're going to explore how we will actually meet that goal. And I will hand it over to the incredible Dr. Jeanne Larber with this information.
So as you know, the MTSS system is a single system where we look at behavior, which includes emotional behavioral health issues as well as all those other pieces related to school culture and increasing kids' ability to stay in a safe environment. And if we have a really strong implementation where our teams are functioning well, and we have the interventions put in place and the supports for kids, it will help decrease any type discipline, regardless of disproportionality. That is the goal. It also has some other outcomes, which has to do with attendance. Academic achievement have all been related to MTS, who's all heard this bill lots of times from the parent. So the other piece is, is as we continue to work on our comprehensive school counseling program, they're key to helping support students so that we aren't in a situation where kids are being removed from class for every single incident, that they are getting the academic education they need or social emotional. So how we will get there, there's two pieces on here. I, I'm just going to address, one is called SWISS data. That's called Schoolwide Information System. It allows schools to look at behavior incidences by where the student has performed this behavior that has been reported. So fighting, let's say, the location. It also gives information on gender, ethnicity, it also gives information on who's involved. And also the why, you know, what's the motivation of the student's behavior of doing that? So we use Swiss data to help, or buildings help use it to help them understand what the behaviors are. And we do this technique called drill down to figure out, how can I have some positive behavior interventions and supports so we can change kids' behavior? How do we discipline, instruct? And we're going to do an activity together on that. So hold tight. And then the second one is that positive behavior interventions and supports that we hear about all the time at all tiers, whether it's tier one, all students get certain behavior interventions and supports, which includes social muscle learning, or it might include community from mental health. And then tier two interventions would also have these specific behavior supports and interventions, as well as tier three interventions. And then Josh is going to talk about restorative practices and how that all fits in.
Yes, thank you. So restorative practices based on social science, right? And it's actually been implemented many years and in many districts. And so, but what really, what it really is, is a different mind shift and approach to how, to discipline. And we talked about that zero tolerance policy in terms of what it was like for us back in the day and how now we're learning a little bit more as we look at the research. But the goal really is to build healthy relationships, strong partnerships, and to learn how to respond to incidents when harm actually has been done. And I usually say this too, it's like, this actually helped me to become a better parent. And so, really, I say that because through my experience in restorative practice back in my old school district, I realized there's a lot, you know, there's a lot to, there's underlying concerns that, and things that need to be addressed. And it really has. Concerns that, and, and things that need to be addressed, and it really has made me a better parent and really made me think about. How, what my uh, response would be and what my, my kids are looking, how they're like, looking at it as well. And so, um, now, I wanna address something though, it, it does not replace any disciplinary consequences. Um, but it does add another dimension to what we need to do, and it's that, how do we make things right? How do we ensure that students learn that the be, the type of behavior or misbehavior that they showed was not right? And how do you correct that? And so, that's what restorative practice does, is make things right, repair harms done, and build on those healthy relationships. And with restorative practice, uh, in alignment with MTSS, there are those tier one levels, there's tier two and tier three levels. And so, this is also, I'd like to connect us back to that uh, pillar uh, B, C and D as well. Now, the question is, how will we respond if we don't get there? Here's our uh, action for uh, plan for improvement. So, we do have the tier fidelity inventory, um, identifying areas of strengths and supports. Uh, we do this quite often, three of us, and as well Susan, uh, who's done amazing job. Um, going to different schools and working with other tier uh, one teams, two teams. Um, and we look at areas of strengths and supports, uh, we have professional learning, uh, continued professional learning, staff, uh, support. So, supporting staff and students, community partnership, agency partnerships, and just to continue to, continuing, continuation. Of implementation science and cycle inquiry for improvement, so how are we uh, looking at the data and how are we improving from it?
Alright, so here's a little activity we're gonna do together. Um, I mean, you have two options. Uh, you're looking at this, you're going, huh, drill down activities, so I talked about Swiss. And about our school-wide information system and how you can use this computer program to drill down to some specifics. And what I've given you is first, the sheet of a document that says what was included in this data sheet. And on this sheet, I'm gonna start, sorry, Dr. Dan, and pass those around. On that sheet, it first describes the location of a problem behavior, and there's three problem behaviors. One is fighting, which could be exclusion, um, one is physical aggression. And um, minor contact, physical contact. What you see in those graphs are how many students up to this point who have had um, fighting. Uh, physical aggression and um, minor contact in the playground. So, I did some of this drill down for you, and what I want you to take a look at is look at the summary. So, there's thirty two referrals that were made, and there was seventeen students involved in that. And there was thirteen staff members who put in referrals for behaviors. One of the reasons this is so key, of a, of important point to help change um, behaviors. Changing students, um, whether it's tier one, not just behaviors, but changing how we interact with kids. Is because every building drills down their Swiss data, and at the bottom, you can see it by gender, which fits exactly with what we're already seeing. Is we see more males and females, we're not deciding why or what, we're just seeing this is true. So, what our buildings do is my next piece of paper, that I'm gonna have you complete. Which is called a solution component, um, sheet for school-wide or individual students. On the top is an example of how school would use that. So, they would look at these four areas, there are others, but I wanted to use this sample. Um, this is again, another fifth grader. Since January, a group of fifth grade students have been referred for minor defiance in the commons area during lunch in order to avoid tax. So, when you drill down, you can also find out what the person making the referral, what you think might have been going on with that student. So, typical in a commons area, if they have to go back to class, they start doing some other behaviors, right? They don't wanna go back and try and avoid the tax. So, what happens is then the team drills down and says, okay, now that we know that the problem statement is. Who, what, when, where and why, what are the solutions for this? And there can be multiple, but on the front, what you're gonna see is there's prevention, there's teaching, reward and consequences. On the backside of your sheet are all kinds of options that you could use to help solve this problem. So, in the second box, here's the one that you guys with elbow partners are going to work on. Since October, seventeen fifth grader raised to receive thirty two referrals for major physical aggression. Fighting and minor physical contact at recess, and why? Because they wanted to obtain uh, their preferred activity. Can you not see this? Okay, so, here's your job. We're gonna look at prevention and um, how about Paul and Kevin, you work on prevention. Flip your sheet over, there's all kinds of options that you could use there. You're gonna come up with one or two ideas that your building is going to implement to help solve this behavior problem at recess. Okay, and then uh, Rhett and Eddie. I had that brain cramp for a minute, um, you're gonna work on teaching. So, what can we do to teach students to do what's expected? Right, hands and feet to yourself, that kind of stuff, right? So, you can turn it over and start looking at, what would we do if that was me in my building, what would I have them do? And then, um, Erin and Dr. Dan, what can we do to reinforce appropriate student behavior in this situation? And then together, we can come up with what can we do to correct and, to, to correct this inappropriate behavior. Again, the backside of the sheet, you don't even have to think too hard, you could make up your own if you really want to. Um, but you could select a couple of these, so I'm gonna give you a minute to look through those. Prevention, teaching, reward, and then we'll come up with some ideas of consequences. Okay, one minute.
And each turn, I don't know the last things, but you know.
Alright, Kevin and Paul. Alright, ready to share?
Sure.
Alright, so yours is prevention, what did you basically come up with?
Uh, our first one was to set expectations, you can't really expect behavior, you don't set up expectation. Well, and then if you are dealing with poor behavior, you can point back to the expectation that you stated.
Like that.
It could be a new student as well, so if you're setting the expectation, sure. Number two was, uh, you know, increase uh, in reinforcing students who solve problems appropriately. That can be done, uh, a couple of ways, by identifying, you know, uh, putting more praise on that student when they're, when they're doing uh, better. But also talking with staff members to say, hey, you know, praise your students when they're doing more. Uh, sometimes that other student who might have thought, I don't wanna rule along, might want that praise, and so they might start.
So, part of your prevention is also teaching adults to do more reinforcement or re, you know, comments, positive comments.
Yeah, sometimes this behavior can be looking for attention, so we wanna take positive attention, not negative.
You're speaking my language.
Yeah, our last one was, um, as you come out of those two things, provide choices. Uh, of course, always the choices that you prefer any one of, um, and give them the chance to empower them to make a choice. Cause that will help just reinforce that, right?
Yeah, who doesn't want a choice?
Yeah, exactly, thank you, that is great. Now, you can see that in a team meeting, this is what people do, is they come up with ideas and then they implement that, this plan. So, those are great ideas, and then we talk about, as adults, how do we do this? Cause this is really for the adults to help either teach and, and make those prevention kind of changes. Okay, Rick and. I, I knew it. I was thinking, do I usually call you Deb, or do I call you Debbie? What I usually do, okay, yeah, it works.
Do you wanna go first?
You go ahead.
And we did agree, um, on the first step, which was, um, oh wait, do you wanna know what?
Yeah, teaching, which one?
Teaching, okay, is to teach problem-solving skills, um, so, you know, the, the kids can. Be able to work through the problems sort of themselves initially. Um, the second step was also to reteach, um, expectations for common areas. And Rick can add on to that, I had more, but he thought that two doesn't have, just saying that.
The big thing was, is Deb said, I think, they gotta know what the expectations are, just what they said, or what they could do in those common areas. Then the other thing was, we kind of talked about was, so, you know, the communication skills. So, when you're, when the kids are having a problem, how are they gonna deal with the problem? You know, or how can they, you know, work it out themselves, so that it doesn't become the problem? And then the, the other piece that I mentioned was, it's the same thing that they said, is that, you know, we've talked, I'm a big motivational interviewing guy. And it's how the teachers and all the staff are gonna be talking to those individuals to motivate them to not do the things that got them into the problem.
Yeah, I like it, thank you.
In addition to that, I was just gonna say that I think that eventually, um, teaching some of the um, perspective talking. And some of those other skills, I think you can come, come in with a teacher, you know, kind of work with that gradually. But I think to hone in, I mean, do too much at one time is, especially for fifth graders, would be a lot.
Yeah, I thi- I think all you have, those are great ideas and it's not too many. That's idea, is not to have teams just come up with a list of things, cause it's too much for anybody.
Yes.
Um, but those are, you know, great strategies for teaching and, and then we're on to reinforcement, thank you. Dr. Dan and Erin.
So, we have the reward, what can we do to reinforce appropriate student behavior? We talked about just really filling that bucket with positivity, um, and just pumping up any time, uh, we see. You know, students solving conflicts appropriately, um, and, you know, schools have different ways of doing that, whether it's shout outs or. I mean, you can take example, one coming into your room and say, hey, you know, you're so, so did such a big job, and just celebrating that positive attention. Um, whether it's sharing with families or other students.
Yeah, yeah, probably focus home. Yeah, plus, also, those are great. What about corrective consequences? Thinking about that, because remember, it's still teaching, and how do we do something that still is a consequence? Because having natural consequences are important. So, when I go through that airline line through TSA and I go, it beats, I must have had something on me, right? Same thing, I have to go back, so how do we teach kids, what would be those consequences for major physical fighting? Let's just say that at um, recess, what can we do? What would be some ideas to look on the back?
Perspective was, for all SPI, I said, okay, there's certain things that have to, you did the crime, you gotta do the time, right?
Yeah.
Gotta talk, yeah, so, you know, whatever that is, but, you know, I know they have to do certain things for certain. Uh, discipline, then besides that, then what you're asking, what would we do, correct?
Yeah, so I'm thinking of consequence, so what would be a consequence if physical fighting happens? And it's always on that, let's just put kickball is a, back in the day, kickball. So, could we have a physical, could we have a consequence that says, okay, guess what, Rick? Um, we did some teaching, you're doing a great job of keeping your hands and feet to yourself. And then soon as you got up and someone said you were out, you had someone's stuff. Until next week, you're gonna have to play at a different zone, right? But would that be a consequence?
No.
Yeah, so those are the kinds of things our team members really go through, is looking at all these pieces. And all of you had the same idea, you can't do too many, but what can our adults do to help our students learn? And change their behavior, that's our whole goal, right? So, thank you for entertaining me with doing a quick little uh, solution component for our school-wide uh, information system.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Jeanne. Um, before we move forward, I just wanna say, um, just kind of reiterate, uh, when we talk about disproportionality. In terms of this, uh, this goal, uh, the goal really is for us, is to look at the twenty two, twenty three school year as our baseline data. So, as you saw, it's a TDD, TDD, you know, for certain student groups, we're, um, we're in the process of, uh. My, uh, data mining goes, uh, so that we actually have a baseline data of where are we at. Uh, now, moving forward, um. We are now going to switch gears and focus on academic goal, so by twenty twenty six, there'll be a ten percent increase in enrollment of students taking advanced coursework. And specialized programs in all student groups, so, uh, you're gonna bear with me on this one, okay? So, areas of focus, now, there are two areas of focus in this PLC uh, question. Um, we're only gonna focus on question one and two, what do we need to know to be able to do, and where are we now and how do we know? So, we'll focus on the first one. And uh, what we need to know is that when students graduate from Summer Bonn Lake School District, we expect them to become responsible community contributor. Contributer, contributor, uh, twenty first century collaborator, innovator, thinker, global conscious member of society. And self-empowered learners, right, this is our portrait of Summer Bonn Lake School District graduate. And so, basically, this is our outcome, our expectation of our students, and this is our, really our belief system. And uh, what I'm proud of is that these skills really hold high expectation and is in alignment with our goals of increasing students. Um, taking advanced courses and specialized programs. Uh, not only do we have a belief system, but we also have a policy in place that is really our day-to-day system, right? Um, so, uh, this is in alignment with uh, pillar one, access to rigorous coursework. Um, not only are high expectation within their beliefs, but is also reflected within their system. Policy twenty one ninety five recognizes the need for all high school students to have greater access to rigorous advanced courses. Including dual credit programs, uh, so any student, regardless of academic ability, can enroll in a higher level program. With the support and guidance of their teachers and staff, so, uh, really, teachers and staff, counselors, you know, they have those in-depth conversations. With students about, okay, let's push your potential, you did really well, your ninth and tenth grade in terms of your ELA class. How about you try, you know, Ivy English, AP English, uh, try to push yourself a little bit more, so really, uh, seeing where students are at. Um, now, access to rigorous courses, uh, will support the Summer Bonn Lake School District Portrait Graduate. Uh, and as I said again, we have our belief system, and then now we have a system that's actually in place, so. Part of exploring PLC. part of exploring, uh, P L C question number one is what do we need to know? Well, when we graduate students, what are we sending them out to, right? So what does the wo- workforce look like after high school? So, uh, we did partner with A B L, uh, which is, um, uh, really, uh, they, they help us determine, um, you know, our, sorry. A B L, uh, partners with us so that, uh, we can see what our data looks like in terms of students, um, getting access to rigor. Okay. Uh, but some of the things that they pointed out in terms of national research is that they know that, uh, four out of five jobs lost during the Great Recession, and we're talking about two thousand eight, two thousand nine, were those requiring a high school diploma or less. So that's something that we know. Uh, we also know that two out of three jobs available today require post-secondary education. So we're going to dig a little bit deeper uh, in terms of this national research. So what you're looking at is, uh, is, uh, the recovery stage of the U S job market. As you can tell, if you look at the bottom from two thousand eight, uh, that's a recession, uh, to the recovery point from two thousand ten to two thousand sixteen. But what I want you to focus on is that red box of two thousand fifteen and sixteen, specifically, uh, when you, what you see in blue. After the recession, uh, there was about a forty-five hundred percent increase in jobs that actually require a bachelor's degree or higher. Uh, now what you see in yellow, there was a hundred and seventy-two percent increase requiring an associate degree or some college in the job market. And then what you see in red, uh, you see that there was only a one point four percent increase in jobs requiring high school diploma or less. Now, the point of this exploratory stage is to know and understand the landscape of the job market. And if we increase students' access to advanced coursework and specialized program, the better prepared they will be after, uh, uh, graduation and after high school. And that's the point. Uh, we want to make sure that we are setting students up so that they don't have to decide right after high school. But let's say a few years from now, you know what? I'm realizing I need a, a post-secondary education. You know what? They're prepared because they went through our system, because the system prepared them. That's the goal. Some of the things that we want to talk about in terms of, uh, looking at, um, this goal is the common language. Uh, what does advanced coursework mean and what the specialized program? So what we know is that advanced coursework, you know, and we have identified advanced placement, international baccalaureate, honors courses, college and the high school, uh, for specialized programs, four plus C T pathway and completed, uh, C T path and completed. Now, question though, is there are lots of specialized programs available to our students, but what specialized programs actually qualify as high level course? Or, for example, does a third-year world language, shouldn't that count as a high academic course? Uh, typically students take two years. But there are a lot of students who also take three years. So do we count that as an advanced coursework? So those are some of the things that we're exploring in terms of identifying where we're at in terms of students, um, getting access to higher, uh, higher degrees courses. Yeah, that was fast. That was a lot. Uh, for number one, but in summary, what we need to know is the research. What are we sending our students out into in terms of the job market, U S job market? To our belief system, that's the portrait of a graduate. That's part of our strategic plan. Uh, and, um, that portrait of a graduate just shows the high expectation that we have of our students. Uh, not only that, but that day-to-day, the, um, system, that academic acceleration, it's part of, so we know it's in place. Now, the next thing that we need to do is really I D specialized programs and advanced coursework. Now, the area of focus number two is that second P L C question, where are we now and how do we know? To be honest, this is where we're at. Academic acceleration team, this is where we need to start. It consists of many members. Uh, Kelly, Dan, Steve Scholl, and Michelle, Chris, Kathleen, Erin, Catherine, Elliot, Cara, Allison, and, and me. And so with this team, though, we have to do pre-work before we actually design a plan for goal. And that, this is what the pre-work, uh, consists of. Identify advanced courses and specialized program. We have to go through the course catalog and really talk to one another and teachers, hey, if this student takes this four-year program, would you consider this as an advanced course? Hey, what, what C T E program is actually considered, uh, a specialized program? That can get them maybe a certificate, right? Uh, so we have to go line by line, courses by courses to really identify what those specialized programs are. Then once those, that's defined, we have to collect twenty-two, twenty-three academic data in relation to the advanced coursework and specialized programs. So who were the students that actually took that program? Who had access to that program? Then once we do that, we analyze that data for each student group to identify any disproportionality. Then we review current systems that impact students' access to advanced coursework and specialized program. All that pre-work before we get to an actual plan. So that's why twenty-two, twenty-three is our baseline year in terms of meeting that goal of, uh, academic acceleration and students' access to, um, advanced coursework and specialized programs. Goal four. Uh, discipline and academic, uh, acceleration. I cannot have done, I can't do this work by myself. Um, in fact, I'm just grateful that I have amazing team members, Sarah, um, Jeannie and everybody else, uh, that's actually in here who has helped me. And I'm learning along the way. Uh, so if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
I have a comment. I mean, not necessarily a question. I, I just noted that I, back on the discipline section, I really like the idea of restoring the practice versus suspension. I don't think sitting at home doing nothing is really the best way to, to learn. The behavior that we like to model from our students. Um, I mean, just telling them not to do it. Clearly it didn't work already if they're sitting at home in suspension. So a restorative practice, I think, is, is a good direction to head towards to help them, you know.
I like how you brought that up too, because if you see, right, there's four hundred and ninety-four incidents from now in February and three hundred and five of those, uh, consist of students. So we know that they're repeat offenders. So then the question then becomes is, are they actually learning uh, their changed behavior? Like, are, is their behavior changing from that suspension expulsion?
And I did like the, what came up with that disproportionality can actually start with being consistent across buildings. That, that stood out to me as well.
Do they want us to have questions?
Just a comment. I've done a lot of research and it's pretty incredible and I'm excited to see the next step with it. I like the team. Size, diverse teams. That's great.
Let's come up, it's kind of piggybacking on what Kevin just said about, uh, disproportionate, it could start with the data being entered into the system. And so, you know, one of the questions is, uh, how do we know, you know, we have, how do we know the data is good? You know, who's, who's in charge of putting the data in? Is it being put in consistently? I mean, if I'm a, a principal and I want my school to look like I'm making improvement and I took it over and had a discipline issue and, uh, you know, in a couple of years, I want that discipline number to drop. You know, maybe, maybe I don't consider it like you had said, what, you, you know, what's, what's an issue to you might not be an issue to me. So I don't put it in the system. Now, so it looks like I magically dropped the discipline issues at my school. So I guess that's a question. Um, I know not, not an answer tonight, but certainly something uh, you guys can think about and, you know, how do you make it consistent across the school, the school, the incident to incident?
What I would say, um, uh, the, the Swiss program is a beautiful program because, um, you're listing minors and majors behaviors with the intent, um, and, and I wish I had had it when I was a building principal and I, and I know our principals and our staffs are using it very consistently because we need to understand as building leaders, um, uh, what are the trends, what are the patterns? Because I'm in control or I am responsible for this building and for the safety of our students, right? And so what the beauty of Swiss is, is that you're able to run the reports, do the, and I never forget the right term. The drill down. I want to say the da- the dig, it's the drill down. Yeah, where you're digging into, but what are the trends? You know, um, if I keep seeing behavior coming between third and fourth period at that bathroom, I need to provide supervision. I need to figure out what's going on. And so um, I, and I, I, um, our principals really want to understand what are the patterns, what are the trends so that it can be addressed? Um, and so that's what's, that's the beauty of Swiss, um, is that it informs our daily work so that we can address, um, behaviors that are happening, um, as well.
Who's input? I do see the benefit of that.
Yeah.
Putting the data, multiple people at the school.
Yes.
So every, uh, staff member has an account. So they, depending, there is some schools that they do a paper account and then, um, the person secretary with assistant principals give input about what that is, partly to keep some consistency. Then we have other ones, they just enter their Swiss data and then still and, uh, either assistant principal, principal reviews every referral that comes in before it's submitted to see, does this really fit with the definitions? Cause in Swiss, there's definitions of what that looks like. Um, and so they, there is kind of a double check there. But there is, there, there is some leeway because as even an instructor for myself, what I think is, uh, disruptive behavior is not disruptive to me, but it might be disruptive to Josh. So there's always more learning that we have to do of helping buildings do that. Learning at the building, like what does this look like? What does it sound like? And so then it can be a little more consistent because that, that is always a glitch in data, the consistency of perception.
I can't tell you though, what is consistent though, and I'm going to stick up for our principals here a little bit, is that they, um, they engage in ethical behavior. They aren't getting those slips and manipulating the data to make themselves look better.
Oh, I'm sorry if you're in, taking it, but that's what I'm. I'm not insinuating that about anybody. I mean, how do we prevent that from occurring?
Right. I mean, I think they want to be consistent in how they report.
Yeah.
And, and I mean, Jean and I would see disruptive behavior potentially different. Um, but I don't think as a principal that Erin would be like, oh, I'm not going to put that one in because my numbers are a little high.
Yeah.
I, I don't think they would.
I think they almost over-report everything because you put in minors as well as majors. So they, they do put every single thing, um, they, they actually call it over-report than under-report. Um, partly because this is not, you know, the Swiss data is to help them guide some changes with kids' behaviors. It's not about, oh, I look bad because of these kids are doing this. It's really about, I gotta do this so I can make some decisions of how we can change student behaviors.
You know, I, I think it's a rather lofty goal to think that there's never going to be some, there's not going to be some disproportionality. And, you know, I, I think it's a, you know, I probably, I will not be here in twenty-six, but I may have to come back and say, hey, let me see what that turned out as because I just don't think it's, I, I think it's a great goal to be trying to achieve. But I, I'm not sure it's, it's realistic because there's always going to be some outliers that are always going to make that, it just, I don't I just don't see it happen. It's, it's zero percent disproportionality. It's just.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we could say that about like any goals, like for example, a hundred percent, um, graduation. But, uh, no, 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 totally, totally. But I totally get, uh, where Rick is coming from. Um, I think the goal however, is, um, is that process in terms of making sure that building leaders and staff leaders always look at their, consistently will look at their data to see where the disproportionality is so that they can drill down to the data and focus on, okay, this year, this is where we need to focus this year.
Everybody's going to have different views of what is, how to react to a student and what they think is actually going on. To, to think that everybody's going to be perfectly aligned and everything's going to be alky-dory. I think it's a great goal. Whether you're going to get there, I'm not so sure, but you try.
Yeah. So I think I think what's important is that this enables you to not let anybody slip through and to, um, just be aware of that one or two, or maybe it's twenty, but, but you're going to be working to gather them in, whether it's the graduation or, you know.
I remember going to the training in Yakima when I first got on the board. And, uh, I was talking about, you know, kid comes to school in the morning. He's a homeless kid. Hasn't eaten in probably a couple of days. And, you know, he's going to get set up a lot quicker or something. And then really it's what, how the teacher responds to that and, uh, talking to him and trying to settle it down. So, you know, there's a lot of parts of where, you know, what, what is each, each staff member knowing how to react to these different situations. So it's, uh, it'd be tough.
Yeah.
But I wish you luck.
That's why, that's why we're here.
I appreciate the work, right? Like to change behaviors work. It's not used. Uh, like you mentioned, being a parent, you know, as a parent, it's a lot easier sometimes to not dig in and hold kids accountable and drill down and do the things that we need to do to change behavior. And so this is a lot of work. Yeah. Um, and this is intentional and it's purposeful and it's, um, research-based. And I just, I really appreciate, um, your commitment to it, the team's commitment to it, the district's commitment to it. Um, and looking at how do we help kids behave in an appropriate manner? Because really they have learned that, right? Like whether they learn it in kindergarten, in ninth grade, in twelfth grade, we're not going to give up on a kid because they're homeless and hungry. Right? We're going to lean in and we're going to dig in and they might be our tier three kids that we don't give up on and they just need more. And so I appreciate the work. I appreciate the commitment and I, I just, um, I think this is important. Um, and I can't, um, thank you enough for the presentation and letting us, um, have a little peek of what you are, are working on with our sometimes most at-risk kids. Yeah.
So in addition to that, I don't want anyone to overlook this academic acceleration piece.
That was a good minute.
Cause that is like truly transformational, like we can use this work. We were talking about kids that are, I mean, they're going to get tapped on the shoulder to say, hey, we think you can do this when for maybe years past or however long, they've never really been recognized as having that potential. So, I mean, I hear about the conversations that happen and the discussions that happen around this policy, um, and then like what's the support that comes behind it?
Right.
Because we're not going to set you up with a lack of failure, right? But this is transformational. Yeah. It's just, this is tough work right now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's all tough, but this like, this can be exciting to watch.
So I have that list of team members.
Yeah, great team. When I was reading this the other day, I'm like, and I thought, we're pushing so many kids to the I V, the A P and now, I mean, or is there more C T E or that kind of stuff? Because I think there's a lot of, you know, we used to have Casey in here, you know, and he'd push C T. You know, he was a pipe welder and did fantastic in, you know, like, you know, so sometimes I think, you know, every kid's not going to go to college, every kid's not going to go. So hopefully that, you know, you know, the right C T programs, whatever they are, it's just as essential as everything else.
Yeah.
You know, it wasn't that long ago that they were, um, nationally, they were, um, we went to our, uh, what's the national organization go to? Yeah, right. So they, um, really were trying to push the trades more than, you know, four-year or two-year college. And it, it's interesting to see the trends and how they do change. Um, but also same with what Erin was saying, I think, um, some of the skills that you'd be teaching students, whether they understand it or they absorb it, it just, it doesn't make any difference. They have to know those skills to be successful adults. Whether, no matter where they work, they don't know how to communicate or know how to get themselves out of situations where, you know, there's seventeen kids that are fifth graders on the, you know, they just need to know how to get out of those situations and make it work. The interesting thing is, is that you're here to educate the kids and some of these behavioral things should start elsewhere from the cradle basically. But, um, anyway, I just, I can't tell you now how impressive this is. So, thank you.
Well, I think modeling, showing them and modeling them, not just the academics that they need, just the behavior they need to keep the job. You might be an incredibly smart person, but if you show up to work and behave poorly. You might be an incredibly smart person, but if you show up to work and behave poorly, it won't matter. And so I think those things go hand in hand, whether, you know, whether you go to college or whether you're going trades or wherever you're going. Teaching the behavior that's expected in a professional environment is important.
Any other questions?
Nice job.
Everyone, everyone is hands-on and healthy, so.
Not the next one, but one again in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, alright, we're gonna move into board discussion.
Um, yeah, actually, I did want to bring up one thing I've been thinking about a lot lately. You know, as we, as we go through all these presentations, we always start with the same statement that we wanna know value and support every student. So I've been kind of thinking about like, okay, what are the things that are in place in our district, you know? Do our staff have all the tools that they need to be successful? Um, either academically or behaviorally or any of those things. And one of the things that I kind of dug into on our policy side was looking at what policies we had around behavior. Um, and it kind of is coincidental that it kind of lined up with what I wanted to bring this up tonight, it lined up with your presentation. So I, when I saw that agenda, I was like, oh, it's perfect, I wanted to bring this up anyway. Talking about discipline, discrepancies and, and modeling the proper behavior, but that's at the, you know, down at the building level. And the board is in a different area of the district. And our job sometimes is, is about policies and putting the right tools in place so our staff has what they need to, you know, to help our students with that. The one thing I noticed looking through our policies and looking at other school districts around the state was something that I think we might be missing, which is an anti-racism policy. And I looked at all their schools and I found that there were thirty-six schools in Washington that have anti-racism policy, specific standalone policy, separate from bullying policy, separate from all of the other behavioral policies. I found thirty-six school districts that have a specific anti-racism policy. Um, and so I wanted to bring up tonight and ask our board members that are on the policy committee to take back a request from myself to the policy committee to look at adding an anti-racism policy to our school district. In doing that, I printed out some things that I wanted to hand out to each board member. And so I'll give everybody a copy here of what I've done and then I'll explain what it is. So, what you have in front of you is something that I just typed up. Um, kind of my proposal, what our current status is, what the need is. What the proposal is and then what I think are the foundations of an anti-racism policy. So starting with the status, you know, currently, like I said, we don't have a standalone policy, many other school districts do. We have policies in place, this district about for substance abuse, for sexual harassment, for bullying. Uh, but nothing that specifically addresses racism. And I think in our society, that's, it's, it's there and it's needed. Um, and so my proposal is that we adopt or look into adopting a policy that addresses racism. Um, to give our staff the tools they need to help model behavior that we'd like to see. And so behind this piece of paper on top are a handful of other policies from other school districts that I printed out. Um, that I thought were really good examples. And in reading all thirty-six policies that I found, I pulled out about seven bullets that I thought were really important to including in the anti-racism policy as a great foundation. And then I also provided a link here, uh, which I can email this to you, so you can actually click on it. Um, that takes you to all these example policies around the state. Um, so that's, that's a, I'll stop there, if anybody has any questions or anything you want to ask, that's kind of where, what I'm proposing we look at.
Well, I saw the request from Wasa asking uh for, you know, school districts that had an anti-racist policy to you know, uh, let them know, cause they were trying to keep cap, which tells me Wasa wants to see that number rise above thirty-six. Out of, what is it, two hundred and, that's about ten percent of the, of the districts in the state of Washington have this anti-racist policy. Uh, we do have lots of anti-discrimination policies. Um, I've read some of these and I'll tell you, some of them are very robust in the terms of uh, reaching back in time and, and stuff like that. They're written in a way that could be very politically charged. And sometimes I've come down on the side of, hey, we, I'm, I'm all for anti-racist stuff. And, and for non-discrimination, I'm for equal opportunities. And when we start to make things look like it's a real politically-driven agenda with uh uh, stuff that's super politically charged, I think sometimes we lose our message. That we are an instructional and educational uh organization. When you said if this gives, something like this would give the staff tools that it needs, I don't know that it would. I'm not saying it doesn't, I'm not saying it wouldn't, I just don't know if it would. Your request to take it back to the policy committee is good, we can talk about it on the policy committee. But, but yeah, we can open to other people, but I'll just tell you how I feel about it.
I appreciate those comments. I really appreciate um you bringing it to the board. I appreciate um the thoughtfulness behind it. Um, I appreciate the intent. Um, and I also um appreciate the policy committee's willingness to um look at it um with an open mind and I think, um, I think it's worth looking at. Um, and I, I'd love to have that go through um to you and the rest of the team members on the policy committee for further review. Um, so you, what you come up with. I'm all for moving that forward.
I agree with Erin, I think, um, I think it's time to look at it and you've got a great committee. I'm not too sure who's on, on the policy committee right now, but um, I think, yeah, with an open mind, I think it's.
And the right lens, right? Like, you, you can have a political lens and that's not what we want, right? We want policies that are for and about kids. So if that's the lens, I have faith that we can, you know, the team can come up with a really good policy that is for kids. So, um, I think then.
Yeah, I'll say, you'll, yeah, I think we take, take, take some time to read all this, um, you know. I think it is addressed in a lot of other areas and I guess, well, like, there's two hundred and ninety, I think, two hundred and ninety-four districts across the state. There's these thirty-six that have this. Yeah, we can always read it and look at it and see. Of course, there's other people on the policy committee than the members of the directorships. And heard to look at and read it.
Yeah, I appreciate the research and I think, um, maybe if the policy committee does any additional research to see how that's really benefited the districts, I think, yeah, I think it's a great idea. And I think, yeah, you don't want to be politically charged, we still don't want that. But, but on the other hand, we need to, this is, you know, two thousand twenty-three.
I will say that, you know, Paul brings up a good point that a lot of, I think a lot of this is addressed in some of the policies. For like bullying or, you know, harassment and stuff like that, but um, I think that's why we have those policies, but we can discredit the work that you did, we could take a look.
I think Erin's point of having it more of a student-focused, so that it's not some grandiose uh, political statement, uh, is, is probably the right approach to take, so, thanks for your comments.
I'll just state that racism is not political. Absolutely not.
That's not where I'm going. I'm, I'm sure you've read some of these statements and, and some of the other ones. And uh, you would say, wow, that's really some grandstanding, uh, in a, in a, in a way that would really turn off about half the population. Uh, and uh, in fact, some of the stuff almost sounds like it came out of a CRT textbook. And I, I'm just being upfront with you, Kevin. I, I'm not saying that anti-racism isn't gonna happen, I, I'm just saying that we need to watch it and be careful.
Well, I wanna focus on the students in this situation and, and not as much about the adults. I think that's students are the focus when it comes to this. I think in our district that we are seeing this and, and we have other policies. But I think that as we get to restorative practices, I think racism is something that needs to, to be stood alone, to be looked at. And I think a standalone policy goes towards giving those restorative practices to help model behavior. Give tools to educate students that racism is not okay.
Racism is not okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think Paul is saying that.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that in reaction, the only thing I'm saying in reaction to what Paul said was about racism being a, a political or this being a political thing, it's just racism is racism, it stands alone as a problem that we need to address.
I, I think what I'm understanding you to say, and you can correct it, is that with restorative practices, you're feeling that there's harm in the community. And uh, a policy like this would be a restorative practice, I can all of branch to say, we hear you.
And I, no, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I don't wanna use those words, I don't think that I'm giving it all branch, that's not what I'm doing.
Well, you're right, if you're, I'm looking at. Very good term. It should be more like we, uh, we acknowledge that there's been harm, is that what you're getting?
No, 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 I, I think you're coming from an angle that I'm not coming from. Okay, I'm not trying to, when I say restorative practices, I'm not talking about restorative reparations. I'm talking about restorative practice that was in the fact that if a student behaves in a racist way, that there's a tool in place to help that behavior and help restore that, hey, that, this is not an okay behavior. And, you know, we do it with sexual harassment. We do it with harassment, intimidation and bullying, we have a civility policy. And I think that having one that stands alone about racism just gives another tool and a way to address a problem that exists.
I think you bring up a good point, right?
Kevin, good sense. I appreciate that too, because I recently asked an administrator what the board could do to better support their work. And they said exactly that, they said create policies that give them the tools they need to do their job. And so, um, I, I appreciate that, that lens. And if we can do that for our district, I think that's what it is about. So I'm grateful for the policy committee, you guys can take this, um, research it, digest it, and we'll look forward to seeing, um, what you guys come up with.
Thanks for staying engaged, because I, I think, I, I understand where you're coming from, I definitely, thank you.
Alright, um, any other discussion?
I'm gonna wait so long.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
Alright, well, with that, meeting adjourned.